Josh, are you good? Yes?
Yeah, first amendment.
All right. We'll call to order the Clinton City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Connell.
Here.
Shemmers.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank your honor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of January 12th, 2021, and they be approved as published on January 26th, 2021, and the special committee of the whole meeting, budget workshop number one of January 14th, 2021, and they be approved as published on January 26th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers. Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
For the folks online, if you could mute yourself if you're not talking. Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to welcome up Chief Girion.
No.
I'm not allowed to come up? I just got here. It's like you're at home. I'm not that tired. Wow. We're trying to tell these new guys that they're liked by everybody. All right. Clinton Police Department along with the Mayor Madison, City Minister Brooke, members of city council, fellow officers, family and friends, and citizens are gathered tonight to recognize the swearing in of four of our newest officers. Before we do that, we are graced with the presence of our newly elected sheriff, and we got a little something, something we want the mayor to present to him on our behalf, if you don't mind. Mayor Greenwald, I mean. That's probably his next job.
Sheriff probably pays better, I'll take it.
Sheriff Greenwald with this plaque, a little token of our appreciation for all of your service.
Wow. Wow, thank you very much.
Outstanding.
That is nice.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We'll continue while Bill cries. All right. Newly officers, can you please line up here in front of the council chambers for me? Officer Trenton first, Officer Nuno, Officer Gracio, and Officer Mooney, in that order, please. I'm gonna give you my spiel and go from there. Yeah. They are fine specimens, aren't they? Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to you and your families for endeavoring on this great career, a noble profession. These times, it's very hard, very difficult to find quality people that still want to do this job. It's an extremely rewarding job. You'll love it. It'll shake you to your core and give you unbelievable rewards. But with the help of your family and your brothers and sisters in blue, you'll get by this just fine. I want to congratulate you on finishing the academy. Everybody says the academy is boring or not what you really want to learn, and the analogy I like to use is, the academy, they taught you how to swim in the police world, in a pool, in a controlled environment, in warm water. Now we're gonna throw you in the ocean in a storm in the middle of the night. You're still gonna swim, but we're gonna help you. And I want you to stay focused on that, stay focused on serving the citizens of Clinton. That uniform represents a great trust that the community has put into you, and I know you all do fine, but we're here to help you, your families are here to help you, nobody is alone. Stay focused, treat everybody like you want to be treated yourself, how you want your family to be treated. Remember, our focus is to serve the community fairly and equally. Always remember to do what is right, and never forget that evil only exists when we look the other way and do nothing. Like I said, remember, we're all here for you, we're a big family now, we're here to help you. When you're swimming in that ocean in the storm, and it's dark out, and you can't go any further, raise your arm. I'll be in the boat behind you. And I'll pull you up and give you some breather, because I did my share. But you're not part of a public safety group, and we've worked very hard in this community to earn a reputation and to keep our community reputation, police community, police reputation good. We expect you to maintain that. Remember, you represent every one of us in this department every day you go to work. I want God bless each of you with the courage and the faith to continue to service to our community that we all strive for. I've invited our police chaplain, Reverend Ron Lott, to say a few prayers, because as I know, in the middle of the night, and you're all alone, you say, "Oh, Lord," we're gonna open communications right now. Reverend? Bastard Ron Lott. He's also available, if you ever need him to talk. He likes three or four o'clock in the morning calls especially.
Yeah, those are especially fun.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You don't need a microphone, do you?
No, I don't, but probably somebody does. Gentlemen, I'm honored to come and say a prayer over you, as the chief has asked me. What you're about to embark on is a career, but it's also a calling, and it's my prayer and our prayer that as sheepdogs, you make constant reference to the true shepherd and looked him for strength and empowerment. Will you join me in prayer? Father, we come here tonight really to bless these men who have risen to the occasion to be a blessing to this community. We ask you, Father, to guard and protect them, their hearts, their souls, their bodies, watch over their families and their loved ones. Lord, we ask you to give them the capacity to, well, conduct themselves with courage and with compassion, with strength and with honor. We pray that anytime they come up short, Lord, they'll look to you, they'll look to their brothers in blue and their sisters in blue, and maybe even their chaplain, and they'll find that they have resources, Father, to meet every need and to serve this community with distinction. We thank you for them and for their kind, and we pray for all of our first responders from each branch. We thank you for them, ask your blessing on them, in Christ's name, amen.
All right, we'll get on with the swearing ins, but I wanted to remind you all that, you know, today's a day in times, it's not always, there are going to be people that love you, there are people that hate you, but you do your job equally to everybody and treat everybody as family. If you wanted to be loved by everybody, you should have been a fireman. All right. Officer Trenton Eversaw is a lifelong resident of Clinton. He's a Clinton High graduate, and he has an associate's degree from Clinton Community College. Trenton is also a former reserve officer with our department. Trenton, would you talk to the mayor and get sworn in, please?
Well, I have you stuck right up here. Put you on the hot seat. Just look towards me, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge the duties of police officer in the city of Clinton, Iowa as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
Can you have someone, your significant person pin their shield on you?
Yes.
Officer Giovanni Nuno. Giovanni was raised in Otomo, Iowa, he graduated from Otomo High and earned an associate's degree from Indian Hills Community College. Officer Nuno previously worked for the Otomo Residential Correctional Facility as a residential officer, and is here with his wife and children. Officer Nuno.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Giovanni Nuno.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge the duties of police officer in the city of Clinton, Iowa as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
Can someone come up to pin on your shield for you? A very important someone.
Here, you want chief to sign that grave.
We have captains to hold babies. Don't scare the baby, Joe. Oh, no. Who can hold the baby? Oh, there we go. That's why Captain Davis is no longer officer friendly. Officer Tim Gracio. Tim comes for us from Chicago, Illinois, where he graduated from St. Rita of high school. Tim graduated a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from St. Ambrose University, and I apologize for St. Rita, but the Chicago Catholic League, they're not quite the better school in the league, but. All right, Tim, the mayor will swear you in now, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge the duties of police officer in the city of Clinton, Iowa as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
You have someone special to pin your shield, Tim? And last but not least, we have Officer Michael Mooney, who was raised in Woodridge, Illinois, and graduated from Montini Catholic High School in Lombard, Illinois. Michael has a master's degree in criminal justice from St. Ambrose University. Michael, would you meet the mayor and get sworn in, please?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Michael Mooney.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of my ability discharge the duties of police officer in the city of Clinton, Iowa as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
You have somebody significant to pin your shield on? Captains, get up there. Command staff, please join the new people. Guys, one more thing from the old man, please be careful out there, please come home, you start work, and go back home to your families, and remember, you're not alone. We're all here for you, we're all on the same team. The city behind you, the important people in the city behind you are backing you, their citizens back you. You have a sacred trust, and we're gonna keep that trust. Please help me welcome the new officers of the Clinton Police Department.
Hey, real quick, if you want, families, we'll go in order, if you want to come up and get a quick picture with your newly sworn in officer, we'll do that too. So you three right here, come this way. Main man there, squeeze up there, we'll get some pictures with the family, and then we'll.
That's half the cross.
We can tell you're smiling under your mask.
Ready? Mind your way? Good?
Hey, if you guys want, you guys can all depart if you want. I know you're anxious to stay, we got about a three-hour meeting after this, you guys can stay. Now, congratulations to all your family and all your, whoops.
Sorry, she's on the line.
All your troopers.
All right. Moving on on the agenda, our next item, Michelle Cullen, our community health, are you online, Michelle?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Yeah, so I will go ahead and give the public health report on COVID for the evening. So in Clinton County, since the 21st, we have just had an additional 74 cases. So our numbers have pretty much, I'll just say flattened since the beginning of the first of the year. We waited for that spike from the vacation, but we have not seen that, but I did learn today that our hospitalization rates have kind of steadily were going down, but then today, in our region, they did jump up to close to 100, had been running in the 90s. Genesis went from 32 hospitalized yesterday to 50 hospitalized today. Mercy is at four, so something that we'll keep an eye on, but our positivity rate has been steadily going down. We are at 12% today versus a week ago when I gave my report, it was at close to 17%. So that has steadily been going down. Unfortunately, we have had 68 deaths since March. 60% of that is in the age group 80 and older. And we have one facility, Eagle Point, that is on outbreak status, otherwise everybody has cleared that, but Eagle Point is managing well, continuing with their weekly testing and in contact with the state. I'll give a short vaccine update, since that's kind of the hot topic of late. In Clinton County, we have given 2,200 vaccines, and that is to the Phase 1A group, which is your direct healthcare workers and also your long-term care and your assisted living residents and staff. On February 1st, we will be able to go to that Phase 2 or Phase 1B, and that is the 65, those aged 65 and older, and then the other essential care workers. And we will be starting, the state has put the essential workers into a tier level, and tier one is your first responders, which include your firefighters, police, child welfare workers, school workers, and childcare workers. Tier two is more your manufacturing and some of your individuals with disabilities. And tier three is more your conjugate living individuals that were not in Tier 1A, and then some of your government officials. And just to let you know, I did clarify that, I read it as that it would be like city officials, county officials, and the state said no, that it was more state officials. So if you want that one changed, you'll have to take that up with the state staff. And then tier four are your inspectors with your hospitals, your long-term care, and your childcare facilities, and then tier five is your correctional and your incarcerated individuals. And I would not say that would include those people that are placed in jail overnight or anything, it's your long-term people. And I know our correctional facilities, a lot of them are already deputies, so there's kind of a little bit of gray there. But we will, February 1st, be starting with tier one. If we look at those 65 and older in Clinton County, there's over 9,000 of those individuals. In tier one, there is close to 1,700 of those individuals. So right now, I'm gonna be perfectly honest and transparent, I do not have any vaccine that is in the county to start that. I will tell you on Wednesdays, is when we receive our allocations, that should come in the next Monday, and so I'm hoping that we will get a nice amount, but the state has warned us that the first two weeks of February not to expect a lot in. But I do want to say that Public Health is ready to start those clinics when we get the vaccine. We've worked with our local pharmacies, our local providers, we're all ready, we just want that vaccine in, and so please, I ask the people in Phase 1B and those tiers to be patient with us, we will let them know as soon as we have the vaccine to start, and we're very anxious, as anxious as they are, to get started. So not to preach on the soapbox there, but I just want everybody to know that Public Health and the local providers and pharmacies are all ready to go, we just need the vaccine. And we'll keep you posted on social media sites through, I try to get out the city of Clinton, the Chamber, the Clinton County website, the paper, get some of those also, so I'll try to keep everybody posted. But we're as anxious as anybody else is to get these vaccines out and get our community covered. Questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Musman or Shemmers online, any questions from either of you?
Councilmember Musman or Shemmers online? Any questions from either of you?
No.
Alright. Michelle, thank you very much for the update.
Alright, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Moving to public hearings. I will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of 242 Second Avenue South to Kimberly Leach for $3,000. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Is there any citizens online that would like to address this public hearing? *6 will unmute yourself if you'd like to comment. Any council members that would like to comment on this public hearing, either in the room or online? Okay. Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Oberyn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 242 Second Avenue South to Kimberly Leach for $3,000. I move this resolution to be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberyn.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of 1803 Roosevelt Street to Mike and Sharon Cole for $100. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Any citizens online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 1803 Roosevelt Street to Mike and Sharon Cole. I move that this resolution be adopted as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just one quick highlight, Your Honor. This is a family that's only paying $100, but they're gonna be demoing the property that's there. So, just want to make sure everybody knows that it's $100, but they're paying for the demo themselves.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberyn.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene an authorizing disposition of interest and conveyance of real estate locally known as 756 11th Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that like to address this, either in the room or online? Any council members? Do we close that? Is it, it's not necessarily a public hearing, right? Or is it, or it is a public hearing, we're just missing the words in there?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Just making sure.
Yeah, Musman is missing the word.
Okay. I'll give it one more chance. Any citizens that would like to address this public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. I got confused for a second there.
(laughing)
Uh, Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing disposition of interest in and conveyance of real estate locally known as 756 11th Avenue South, Clinton, Iowa. I move that this resolution be adopted as read or handed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is number four on the gut rehab. So, it was kind of confusing in the reading there, because this is moving the property to ECIA's holder, which is ECDC. They maintain the ownership of the property as it goes through the bidding process. They hire someone, the contractor, they gut rehab down to the studs, replace everything else, and then put it up for sale for someone to buy. And just a quick heads up is that had three showings, our number two gut rehab, so hopefully that should be moving here shortly as well.
No offers yet?
Not yet.
Alright.
Pending, hopefully.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, can't say ACDC?
(laughing)
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 I wish.
(laughing)
Any other discussion?
I thought I heard hell's bells.
(laughing)
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberyn.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of a vacated portion of Buell Avenue. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of vacated portion of Buell Avenue. I move that this be adopted as read. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberyn.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of 800 Second Avenue South and 756 Second Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution rejecting bid received for 800 Second Avenue South and 756 7th Avenue, Second Avenue South. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, this is on the corner of Second Avenue and Bluff, right across from the Washington Middle School. These are two big areas that we actually did demos of the homes that we took by 657A. And so, the bid was supposed to come in not only with a dollar amount, but then also basically a plan to what they were gonna do for that area. And so, we feel at this point in time, it's better to go back for bidding, because we'd like to see a better, a better substantial plan, and frankly, maybe a few more dollars for this area, because this is actually a really good-sized area, both these lots together on that corner of the Bluff and Second Avenue. Uh. Was that communicated to the bidder, too? Yeah. So, they understand? Right.
So, this is a half an acre combined, right?
Just about. Point 51, just about over it.
Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberyn.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the rezoning of Mount Pleasant Park from R-1B One Family to R-4 Residential. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Are there any citizens in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Go ahead.
Can I take this off?
You can. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Erin George. I live at 931 Second Avenue South here in Clinton. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Brook. I appreciate my three minutes. About eight years ago, my husband and I bought the property at Second Avenue South. We have about an acre and a half. That is located within 500 feet of the rezoning proposal. We have received two letters from the city. After we received the first one, we reached out to our councilperson, where we were able to get more information on the proposed project, where we received this drawing. To say we were disappointed is an understatement. It's a beautiful, over-eight-acre lot that they are wanting to put triplexes that are not only triplexes, they're low-income senior housing. Not what we had hoped to be across the street from us. Nowhere in the letters that have been sent to residents that live in the area does it mention that it's low-income housing. It just says proposed triplexes. In the drawing, all of the mature cherries are gone, and I just feel like it would be detrimental. Spending about an hour of my day yesterday looking into low-income housing in Clinton, I was able to find 515 units of low-income housing in the city of Clinton, and that was without contacting public housing. It was simply doing a Google search. Of those, 198 are senior housing that is available. And I just, as a member of Clinton, feel like we need more market rate. Now, I understand that somebody has to come forward offering to build that, but I also feel like we don't need to, as a city, accept the first thing that comes along, which may be low-income housing. So, as somebody that lives in the area, that I feel other residents that are not here, and it's not a good time of year for me to go talk to my neighbors. It's cold, it's winter. They may be afraid of having a visitor. But I feel like they have not been notified properly on what is being proposed for the area. So, I'm just here to say that I hope you would reconsider. Even if you rezone it, I hope you do not accept the offer that is on the table for the 70-something units of low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
I have a quick question. Did this go through the ZVA, the zoning board adjustment? It went through Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Okay. Yeah, to rezone. Okay. So, it, doesn't it also have to go through the zoning board adjustment as well? Not in this case. Hmm, cut. We have Karen online.
Yep. Karen?
She was in here. She was on earlier, I think. She left. I'll double check, but I'm.
If, council, if you have discussion, we're in a public hearing, so you can, you can discuss if you have, if you have points that you would like to make.
So, I guess, yeah, my, my thought was, just, I know it went to the Planning Commission, but I thought also the zoning board has to look at it as well, but maybe I'm wrong. Do you know? No, I think in this case, it went to Planning Commission, and we had it rezoned from R-1B to R-4 for that. Because it was already in. The interesting thing, too, is if you go back in history, is that whole entire area's always been low to moderate income. The residents that lived there, they've always been low to moderate income. They actually leased their home, and they didn't own the ground. The history of it, anyway.
So, it's actually low to moderate income, so it's not all specifically low income. And 70 units, I think, is kind of high, isn't it?
39, 39 is planned.
Yeah, it's in the 30s that he's gonna build. It's not 70, just.
Am I allowed to say anything?
Yes.
Okay.
You come up to the mic, though, so that folks online could hear you.
Um, just within a stone's throw, I mean, I don't know the actual distance, is the old Washington Middle School building, which still has units available for senior housing. So, maybe there's a need. I just feel like this is an opportunity that it could be a really fabulous neighborhood, that there's a mature eight-and-a-half acres in town, and you don't find that very often. When my husband and I were looking for a home, we literally were able to find two that met our bare minimum requirements. Both of them had to be gutted. There is opportunity in this town, especially for somebody that would appreciate a wooded lot. So, please, just take that into consideration when you're making your decisions.
I will say, I echoed those sentiments early on with this development. I think we've come further along with the developer. I'm still not 100% there, but I think, you know, it's, they were one of the only offers we had. My concern was, we do have a lot of LMI in this town. It's, it's one of those things where we have to try to switch that curve. But this piece is, it is a staggered, I don't know what do you call it specifically, but it's a staggered LMI. So, I don't know, remember the breakdown exactly, but it was more so, I want to say, like, 10 to 12 units, maybe, were of the lower income level. And then, I think the, the next income level up was, I don't know, 30 or 40 of the, you know, 30, 40 individuals, or whatever it was, or 20 or 30 of those were the next level, which is still moderate around here, but it, you know, could have been somebody who's retired and, you know, maybe on a fixed income. So, I know Washington Middle School, there was a large concern, but it is the same developer. So, I, yeah, we'll, we'll see where that goes.
I will also say, in eight years, I've had two people wander into my yard. One tried to break in our house in the middle of the night. I am concerned about people. I mean, it's not popular to stand up here and say, "I don't want low-income housing in my neighborhood." I understand that. But I don't want low-income housing in my neighborhood. We already have it. It's Ward 2. Anybody that lives in this town knows that it is probably the lowest income of any ward. And just give it a hand up, instead of trying to make it what it is. Give it an opportunity to improve. And like I said, twice in eight years, we don't even have a sidewalk on our side of the street, and I had to call the police because somebody was trying to break into my home. I'm not saying these elderly people are gonna break into my home, but anytime you bring in multi-unit housing, obviously, there's going to be families visiting, more foot traffic, and it's just not what, I don't, I don't think any of my neighbors, if they knew the whole story, would support it. And I feel like at the very least, you owe it to our neighborhood to send out something that properly state what is being offered, not just triplexes. Send out the drawing. What kind of people we're looking at moving into our neighborhood.
And I'd like to add one more thing, Erin. And I do agree with Sean. We had, I think it's 30% were supposed to be low-income, and the rest were on the other side. But besides that, we did have a private builder come in, and I was all for that, because I want garages, I want houses, I want people with homes. I don't, I don't want these multiplexes anymore. I'm not a fan. But that person pulled out because it was a lot of, a lot more than he expected once he started digging his teeth in.
Do we have to make a decision now? I mean, honestly, when my husband and I found out how much the property sold for, we both said we would have bought it for that.
We actually are waiting for a decision on the tax credits that won't come out until August, so there is time and space. Yep. So, right now, he's basically got an option. He would have an option all the way until I think it expires, like, September, October, September of next year. If he doesn't get the tax credits, more than likely won't proceed with the project, but again, we don't control those, but I don't know if it makes, makes sense to do the first reading of this, and then instead of doing two and three, you know, I don't think it holds up his tax credits at all, right? Or, I think he's already at the application. He needs it by one, by one March. Needs to have. One March, okay. So, technically, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to do one reading at least tonight, and then, like you said, give it time and space, but as long as we have, have that firm and set by March, whether, what way we go.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else that would like to address the public hearing? Councilmembers online, citizens online?
Mr. Lager.
Councilmember Shemmers? Sorry, I can't see on my screen that your hand was up.
It is.
I knew it was. (laughing)
Chris, and I don't recall, I know Washington Middle School was age restricted. Is this also age restricted, or is it time age restricted? I don't recall.
Yep, this is 55 years or older, so this would probably be some from my family that would be by themselves, because they're making $46,000 a year. That's 14 of the units would be for that, which is 80% of the AMI. And then, the issue with Washington Middle School was also 55 years and older, but their, their income levels are lower, and they didn't have the folks to fill that up. So, what, what Chris Ailes had told us was, this is actually the 55 years or older that actually have more income, that didn't meet the lower income for Washington Middle School.
And I believe that the restrictions on the income were much higher. I mean, you kind of just described that.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. There's only, there's only actually six units that would be, you know, somebody making $17,400 a year.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Clinton, Iowa by rezoning and changing the district classification for Mount Pleasant Park.
So.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I don't know what... I guess the proper procedure with this, but I'm okay with reading the first reading tonight and not suspending the rules. But if somebody else wants to suspend them, they're...
I would support Councilman Bell's suggestion.
Second. Okay.
And again, just to note that wanting to make sure that the public serve, but also that the developers are well aware that we can still try to get this, you know, wrapped up in a timely manner for his deadline, or whatever it would be, March 1st, I think he says.
Yeah, if the council so chooses to do it this way, there would be two meetings in February to read if they... If you would like to move on.
Mayor, it would also give us some time to look at the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the first ordinance reading. Is there any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the rezoning of 1110 South Third Street, 1122 South Third Street, and 310 12th Avenue South from R-4 Residential District to M-2 Industrial Heavy District. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens online or in the room that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address this public hearing?
I had briefly touched base with you on this, and I know we've got some feedback from some community members about the concern about the transfer of this property.
This is different.
Well, it will be the following, right?
This is Canadian...
Oh, sorry.
This is the next one.
This is the Canadian Pacific Depot.
All right, I'm on the wrong number there.
In South Clinton.
Okay.
We'll get there next.
I'm going to save those comments for later.
We'll save those for later. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody that would like to address this public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Connell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Clinton, Iowa, by rezoning and changing the district classification for the below-described property in South Clinton, parentheses, certain parcels in South Clinton, end parentheses. Your Hon...
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? He's... Okay.
Your Honor, I move the rules be suspended, and the two prior readings be waived per requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3, and the ordinance be placed on its final passage for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. In order to suspend the rules on Iowa Code Section 380.3, it requires a three-quarter vote of all council members. Can we please have a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes to suspend the rules and place this on its final passage. We had a motion and a second on the original motion. And just to clarify, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this area is actually in South Clinton. This is the area where Canadian Pacific is actually going to build, or is building, where their new depot will be, which allows the existing depot across from Happy Joe's and Brad Hurl's there, down by the riverfront, to relocate into South Clinton. And then also, the biggest bang for the buck is not have the CP engines running by Rotary Park there. They'll actually move. And then eventually, for a council meeting probably in spring, we'll bring back to you, looking at the disposition of the old Canadian Pacific Depot, which will become the city's.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we have our roll call vote on the original motion for final passage?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning the sale of certain parcels in South Clinton to Archer Daniels Midland. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you. Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? Councilmember Connell.
Yes, Your Honor. I guess I'm a little surprised that we didn't get anything on file from... In the clerk's office, because we did get some feedback from previous council members and some community members about the sale price of the property that we were looking at with the ADM deal. And we have had a few appraisals done. I think both parties have had...
There's been three.
Three appraisals. I don't know, there's a lot going on there, I guess. When you look at the appraisals, you look at what ADM... Some folks look at what ADM paid in the past for the other parts of South Clinton, and there's a stark contrast between those values. And I just think it's... I don't think it's a really clear-cut way to, you know, the way to look at that in the past 10 years, what they paid versus, you know, what that property is there now. There's no houses, there's some infrastructure. There's a lot of different things going on there. And I guess I... Just trying to do the due diligence, I know that Matt and the mayor and the attorneys did discuss with ADM on certain pass forward here, but I just... I thought if we could give it a little time and space to Matt's famous last words. But just before we ink this deal, that we give it a little bit of thought on how we arrived at these, you know, these numbers. Like I said, I think there's a couple contrasts in those numbers, but who's to say what's fair and reasonable, I guess, you know? So that's my piece.
I will add in there, the $1.19 per square foot, based on our appraisals, is a fair deal in my eyes. We had $1.38, we had an 88 cents and a dollar per square foot appraisals, and we ended at the $1.19. So that's pretty good. Yes, it's less than what they paid for land 10 years ago, but we're... We are in a different scenario. So Councilmember Alasy, go ahead.
Your Honor, I received those quotes and the list of all the properties that were sold and the value. What we haven't considered here is the purchase of this land and the economic impact that it will have overall throughout the city.
Absolutely.
If you were to take that over the same 10-year period of time, I'm sure it's going to far more outweigh the value that they're seeing from 10 years ago.
Yeah, the sale of this land is going to facilitate a business coming in to partner with ADM, when this business is, you know, one of a kind in the entire world, and they're coming to Clinton, Iowa to partner with ADM and to be part of our community. So there is a large economic impact that's coming from this.
It's not as clear to see it when you look at those numbers, but when you start looking at salaries, people moving to the community, they're all over those dollars.
Right.
It's going to make this a good, good bet on our part, I think.
We also had some discussion that, you know, this is bare ground that we're maintaining, that it's not a house that somebody lives in. You know, this right now is costing us money. This is also not the entire... There's two parts to this deal. So the number that we see here, the $287,000, is not the whole deal. We have to do this part first, and then there's some alleyways and some streets that are going to get sold over as well at the same price per square foot, the $1.19. So the total ends up being, is it 571? I think somewhere in that range is what the totals say will be, just being two parts. So some of the communication I got from citizens, they were on the one side of this, and I don't think they understood that there was a second part of this coming. But yeah, I'll take any other comments from council members if they have any.
Yeah, because what a question was, the $1.87 per square foot was done 10 years ago, and that's when there was actually a house, and people had to pay to be relocated. And so there was a higher demand for that at that point. So what we thought also is, as you guys know, I was going to use Beale Road, which we just did a vacation of. That usually is 20 cents to 30 cents per square foot. But because ADM was working with us and a good partner, they understand that these are unbuildable parcels individually. And to put those together, yes, this will help with ADM's and Spyber's relationship, but also added in the streets and the alleyways at the same square foot's cost. So all in all, if we'd done $1.87, we'd actually made less money than if we would have done the way that we did this with ADM right now. So I think, you know, it's fair and impartial as we look back over the years, different times for different spaces. And I think one of those pieces, as Councilmember Connell and I were just talking about, is, you know, there's going to be dollars that are gained that we've never seen before in terms of revenue for wastewater, which one of our biggest issues that we hear from people is the amount of their sewer bills. And because of this adventure that we're going on is will allow us to start having the council be able to do a rate study to look at reducing residential sewer rates. So there's more to it than just a piece of ground. This is a bigger macro piece. As Councilmember Alasy mentioned, too, the number of jobs, both within ADM and then also Spyber, and then bringing those folks to town. So I think this is a wonderful time for Clinton, and I think this is actually a good deal. I would just... My two cents would... We have Eric Fosnot, who's the plant manager online, and we have Brett Batty, who's legal counsel, and my recommendation is we move this thing forward and get moving so they can break ground on April 1st. So that's my two cents.
And just to, you know, Councilmember Connell mentioned earlier as well that, you know, these are non-buildable lots that we sell some of those lots for much, much less money throughout the community.
Different parts of the city.
Yeah, to neighbors so they can make their yards bigger. So that's... Is there anything else from council?
I think the long-term benefit is probably outweighs the sense.
I just think that we need, you know, it was thrown out there, they didn't... Comparing it to the dock sale. And, you know, the dock sale, to me, was, it's apples and oranges. That made us money.
This, yeah, this is not revenue generating.
That was an income stream for us, and it was sold. This is not on the tax rolls, and we have a couple partners now that are interested in the property for economic development, and I think it's just, you know, it really makes sense. We're not going to get what we got 10 years... Or what those folks got 10 years ago. Different time and place, so.
And this is, I mean, this is going to add some jobs right away, and the potential for the future is hopefully even higher. Okay. Anyone else that would like to address the public hearing? Either online or in the room here? All right. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Alasy.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of real property from the city of Clinton, Iowa to Archer Daniels Midland Company. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers. Oberon.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
All right. Moving to the audience comment section, I've got two yellow cards. The first one, Sierra Peterson.
Hi, guys. It's definitely different being over there.
He's got the clock on you.
Oh, he would. Sierra Peterson, 638 Third Avenue, South. I just wanted to come and give you guys a little bit of a clarification on the January 12th COW over the roofing grant. I wasn't able to make that one, so I just wanted to give you guys kind of a rundown on what we had worked with. When we started this grant, we went off of Goose Lakes program from 2017, and we went off of the LMI guidelines that were on there, was what we were given. With some recommendations through BNS and Tammy, we realized that a lot of the demographic of Clinton is above these guidelines, so they are not eligible for this grant. So we thought maybe we should work on trying to manipulate those numbers a little bit, and we were under the impression that during the CIP, there was supposed to be $50,000 for four years being borrowed. That number quickly was changed, and it was switched to, we were told that it was going to go through LMI funding, and that there was a rough number of $237,000 of that. I am now learning that the LMI funding is now being cut down to $30,000 for three years. That is a concern to me. We were already worried with the facilitation fee from ECIA that $50,000 wasn't going to give us enough of an advancement and achievement through the grant.
Quick update. So $50,000 be the first year, because we want to see how well it does.
$50,000 the first year, and then 30 after that?
Oh, and then 40 the second year, but then that's when the pot fills back up from hopefully the new houses being built. So we think we might be able to get to 50, 40, and then get back up to 50.
Do we know the percentage from ECIA's facilitation?
They... I think they asked for $10,000. Is that what they asked for?
So we're already knocking it down to 30. So let's be on a rough average of a roof nowadays. What do you think you're costing?
Depends on the size.
I mean, you're not looking under $6,000, $7,000, and that's a small house. For some of the things, and what we're dealing with out here and what this grant was aimed towards, that's not really going to help a whole lot. My personal belief was, coming in with these new numbers that are on your guys' paperwork that was moved forward, they are, you know, more... They are a little bit higher than what we were originally given, so I'm not against that. I just feel like we may be cutting some of the demographic of Clinton that really needs this, that elderly home. The woman that you were talking to me on Fourth Street, we just tore down, she needs a new roof. She's not going to qualify for this. Those are big things that are going to make a difference. She would probably qualify for the other things that we got coming up, and the next time, I'll be up here at the podium. But, in just a little bit, but I'm just letting you know that that's what the clarification came from, that's why the numbers were jumped around a little bit. So I was not aware that the money was being pulled down to $30,000 until just recently. I wish that there would have been a little bit more communication. We put a lot of time and effort into this grant. We did a lot of personal meetings with other agencies to get the numbers and to work through this. So a little bit more of communication on what the changes were going to be would have been greatly appreciated, but I wanted you guys to know that that's where we came from. I do have this and the numbers that we came up with. If you guys want them at any point, just go ahead and shoot me an email. I can get them to you, because that's what we originally had come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question on the income guidelines. I do want to talk. We were moving that back to what actually HUD did.
Yes.
Instead of varying from that.
Yep. We want to make sure, because we're using the LMI dollars.
Yes.
We have to follow HUD guidance to a T, yes.
However, the numbers that are on the application that you guys did move forward are a little bit... Some of them are higher in the smaller... I can give you a quick little example. So in the numbers that we were given previously, a one person was 41,000... Or I'm sorry, 36,500. And then we had looked at it to go to 41,400. Now, the numbers that are on the grant application that you guys are approving, which is not what the Neighborhood Improvement Committee approved. Let me just throw that out there. That is not what we approved that was moved forward. So the numbers that you guys are approving is 40,600. So it still is above what we were given originally for the LMI dollars. I just wanted you guys to be aware that there was a clarification error in there. So I wanted you guys to have the proper information. So I have this available if you guys want it.
Okay. Thank you. Erin, I know you filled out one of these cards. Do you have anything else that you'd like to say? Okay. I just wanted to give you the opportunity since we're in that section now, okay? All right. Anybody else that would like to address the council? The audience comment section? Anybody online or in the room? All right. Crickets. Moving on. Councilmember Oberon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
No.
If we could still pull 9E, that would make me happy.
That's, that's not on the consent agenda. 9E is on the.
Oh, it's got to be 9, oh my gosh, I did this.
9 is on the next section.
It's got to be 9E.
Councilmember Shummers, did you have something? 8 Papa.
8 Police.
8 Police.
Any other council members? Discussion on the consent agenda? Councilmember Musman, anything? Okay, can we have a roll call on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns?
Thank you, your honor. I move the claims be received, approved, and placed on file.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Connell?
Thank you, your honor. Just give me a second to scroll down. Scrolling. Oh, come on. Hang on. Okay. I have a. I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendations of boards and commissions. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Connell, would you like to read those for us?
Yes, Advisory Appointments Committee, one reappointment, Carolyn Tallett, two-year term, expiring 4/1 of 2023. Airport Commission, one reappointment, Tom Dederman, six-year term, expiration date 3/31 of 2027. Civil Service Commission, one reappointment, David Brown, four-year term, expiration of 4/1 of 2025. Finance Committee, one reappointment, Brent Alverson, two-year term, expiration of 4/1 2023. Neighborhood Improvement Committee, one new appointment, Sierra Peterson, six-year term, expiration 1/26 2027. Planning Commission, three reappointments, David Brown, Jan Hansen, and Carolyn Tallett, all six-year terms, all expiring 3/31 of 2027. So thank you to all of them that volunteered their service, because you're doing pretty good at your boards and commissions.
Yeah, at the current moment, we're full. So that's exciting.
I like it.
Yeah, there's just the Vehicle for Hire Board. That's the only one. Actually, I think there's one more. Is that the only one, Lisa?
I'd have to check.
But, yeah, I mean, basically, basically full. So I'm excited that we have citizens that are coming out to, to fill these spots on a volunteer basis. We also have a lot of new names that have come across in the last few months that have been appointed. So it's really inspiring to see that different people getting involved. So keep, keep out on the website and, and keep an eye out. I know we're going to have in the March timeframe, we're going to have some, some spots opening up on a few boards and commissions, people that are expiring or choosing not to, to go on with another term. So any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Musman?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the 20 points certified local government annual report for the Historical Preservation Committee before to be attached 0125 2021. I move that this resolution be approved as read, or admitted.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Jan Hansen, are you online by chance? Star 6 would unmute you? Maybe not.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I must apologize. That was my dog that's our. A deer, a deer walked by the living room window and. This is just a small report for the Historic Preservation Commission and Certified Local Government to State of Tennessee. It's nice to have a Historic Preservation Commission. And we joined with the local monuments city during 2020 to restore the monuments in our River Stock Park area, including a repaint of freedom rock honoring the veterans of Hudson County. Our projected goal for the next year will include monitoring the status and health of the city's national registered treasures, while resigning a home for the 1880's peak glendale from the St. John's Food Reserve. So that's what will be sent to the state historical society.
And Jan, we'd just like to thank you, because we know this is an annual requirement from them, but you always do a great job, and we appreciate all your service on the Historical Committee.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this item from council?
You get big in trouble if you don't turn it in.
Yeah.
Just a quick note, you know, I'm the liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. I am amazed at the historic attributes of our community as I get deeper and deeper into this. And I think that one of the things that we should look at as a council going forward is kind of, I don't want to say exploiting our historic heritage, but certainly using that to really, you know, we are doing some great things here in our community, and we always want to look back and look at our historic, you know, stuff, and you know, it's just one of those things that we kind of take for granted, and we need to kind of hit it on that. Just, just something to keep in mind as we go forward.
Maybe we could leverage the, the commission as we're looking forward in economic development and advancement, that we try to tie pieces of the heritage in there as we're, you know, like Liberty Square, as we're trying to get that. Maybe we could, you know, figure ways out to, to tie that in. I think that would be kind of neat, so.
And this might actually be for a different committee, but it'd be nice if all the counties would get together and have a, like a Facebook page for their Freedom Rocks and have that be part of a, like, if you wanted to take a veterans tour, they could do that along, around the state of Iowa. That's something to think about.
Well, early planning for 2032 has begun for the 175th anniversary of Clinton.
2032?
Oh, boy.
You'll be retired by then, won't you? Any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving city of Clinton's updated snowman ice control program. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Just like to thank our Public Works Director and his team, Brian. They worked hard on this. This, the first storm, December 20th, excuse me, December 30th storm, was as first as the Public Works, and I think they took a lot of lessons learned. Do appreciate the patience with some of our citizens as we have resumed towing cars that are not parking, or they're, they're parking where we need to do plowing. So we just, you know, we appreciate the patience with the folks. We did work with some to be able to, you know, have them pay a fee and move out, but this is all part of that plan, and then as well as when we put the brine out and not using salt. So I think this is a good way to update it, but also at the end of the day, the citizens don't necessarily care what's in written. They just want to make sure that their cul-de-sac or their, their lane is plowed and done so they can get to work and go do their stuff. So appreciate the, all the support on moving forward with that.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers?
Yes.
Oberon?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Musman?
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving the owner occupied roof rehabilitation program administrative plan for 2021 and corresponding applications. I move that the resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember?
Um, I just wanted to, I guess, when Sierra was talking, I don't know if it was spelled out enough that, I think the reason that Matt made a change is because it was initially on the general obligation bond, and it got moved over to TIF monies, if I'm not mistaken.
TIF, the LMI, yes, ma'am.
So that we don't have to borrow that money to loan it out.
Yeah, we thought, initially, we didn't think about the, the levels of income for that. We thought of how we could utilize this money. And what also Nita pointed out too is, is that this is the fund that we use for like the YW, and this is exactly what that fund was set up. So I think we'll work, continue working with the Neighborhood Improvement to see how we can make it better. Maybe it has to be, we do an ADAPUS to 60,000 so we can cover the 10, so we have 50, because really, we want to see the first year come out of the chute and be successful.
Yes.
And then we can, then modify, I, my fear is we're going to end up being, telling a lot of people no because of the numbers that are going to come in and say, hey, we need to have this, which is a good problem to have. So I think with that, that quick shift, I'm sorry I didn't update the Sierra and crew, but I think with the 50 the first year and the 40 planned for next year, that could go up based on houses being built. But I think that will get us out of the chute as a good start. And the other thing which, you know, Sierra kind of led from the beginning here is leaving it in ECIA's hands. It's really important that that is done, to have a third party that's responsible and doesn't put any extra burden on our staff. We'll, we'll still have some inspections, like with Rich and crew, but a roof inspection is a lot different than, you know, a whole entire house piece too, so. But I think, I think we're set to move forward and then do some lessons learned and make sure that we're getting there. And I think leveraging the shingles as well, not the Terry Bradshaw commercial, but the shingles for the roof. I think that will be beneficial, because we may end up saving some money for some folks that instead of that $7,000 roof, now it's 4,000 because we're providing the shingles to you, and they're still sitting on it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Aren't the shingles only allowed for deracial?
Well, right now, I can't, I can't name a house that doesn't need some deracial help, so.
I, I just thought that that was part of the stipulation for the shingles.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why they were donated, and, but we would actually do, we'd be fair and impartial. We'd take a look at it, make sure that, but even like when they came and looked at my roof, it's like you've had this, this, and this even before deracial came. Yeah.
Well, and, I'm sorry, Greg. And lastly, if it is very successful, and to a point that Councilman Shummers has made before, we want to stop the process of having to tear down all these houses.
Yes.
So if it means that this is a highly successful program the first year, we probably do need to look at putting more money towards it next year.
And a perfect spot on for that too, and so our, our gauge is we, because of Sierra as well, we upped it to $500,000 for the demolition fund. So if we don't have to tear them down, that's another avenue we could look, and that could change who could qualify if we actually pulled some dollars for that. So I think we're postured. I think next step is get the applications in, see what the volume is, and then take a look. But I think we're posture to do that, and I'm not saying it would be out of the ordinary for us to come back to the council and say, hey, could we shift some demo funds, 50,000 over, because this program is being so successful and we're not having to tear houses down? And that would be truly, as you said, Ron, that'd be a, a great thing. No pressure for.
Just a little question. So when we're talking about these dollar amounts for one person, two person, three person, et cetera, that has all been changed. I didn't, I, I didn't look at the entire document with this in mind, but we want to make sure, I'm on page 21, that the numbers that are reflected in the application are the numbers that are reflected in the administrative policy that are the same numbers that we are talking about from ECIA.
Yep.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, we've made that connection, that we're not looking at, you know, different numbers. Those numbers right there are the ones I'm, you know, looking at to make sure that those numbers in the application are the same numbers that are in the administrative policy and the same number, not ECIA, HUD. Excuse me, it was HUD. I want to make sure that if those numbers don't match, I want to make sure that our, our resolution.
Our language.
Make sure, yeah, the resolution language states that that's all the same.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I've got, just want to say that.
Go ahead, sir.
$500,000, we better be postured. Just how I have to say.
Thank you. I'm posturing right now. That number better be coming down, right, Mr. Shummers?
Thanks, Councilmember Shummers. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Oberon?
Thank your honor. I have a resolution approving the contract for 2021 Clinton Roof Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Program Administration to East Central Intergovernmental Association. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Alasey?
Your honor, I have a resolution approving and authorizing an amendment to loan and disbursement agreement by and between the city of Clinton and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the reissuance of the $37,548,000 sewer revenue capital loan note, Series 2021 parentheses 2010, rate reset, close parentheses of the city. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
All right, to unfinished business, Councilmember Shummers, 8 Papa.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I would like to find out where we are with this process. I, I see we have a great response. I'm not surprised given the things going on in the world today that are anti-police, and we have a very pro-police community. Where, where are we in this process, Mr. Brooke, and where do we go from here?
You betcha. So as you know, with your background and history, the first step here is getting these names on the civil service list, which was done this week. And so the next phase will be, for those that are distant here, there'll be a team slash phone interview to narrow that down, because we're not looking to spend money to fly them all here. So we'll narrow that group down, and then that group that gets narrowed down with our five local studs, awesome people. As you can see on the list here, our five folks, and whoever survives the round with the not being from Clinton, they will start in, we're going to do some interviewing. The hardest one will be the Bill Shummers one-on-ones that we're going to set up. Now, so Chief, Chief Jerrings working through, our discussions have been to put a little variety on there, maybe even shake it up a bit, crazy stuff as it sounds, but maybe have a couple officers that would sit in with us and then have it set up, and we'll go through leadership and management and those key, key attributes that Chief is looking for, so he can have, you know, a lot more different eyesight and brain power, maybe even have a council member or two that might float in, or who knows, to put pressure on those guys. And so, probably, I don't have the dates yet, because we're going to itch that out, but probably in the coming weeks, we're going to have, in between the budget season and everything, we're going to have interviews that will go on with some objective criteria that we've laid out, you know, from education to experience, you know, across the board, also other things that they do that we're specifically looking for in the job. So that's kind of, it's kind of ambiguous, but that's kind of where we're at today.
So there really is, yeah, I think you mentioned that there's not been a really hard past timeline, but we are moving forward.
We are moving forward, and what we want to get through is the screening of the, what I'll call the international, the non-Clinton folks first. And then once that is done, then we're going to set a schedule up to, based on that number, it could be 10, but it could be at least five, because that's the five internals, and then how many of externals? We're going to set those up and hopefully not burn out the interviewers, interviewees, no, interviewers, because we, we want to give them time and space, each applicant enough time and space, you know, 45 minutes to an hour. So we got to figure out when we can best de-conflict that to get them all interviewed.
Very good, Matt. Thank you for helping me all do this. He is involved forward.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess we just add that maybe, since he asked, that when you have that timeline set, that you distribute it to council and,
Heck, yeah.
And kind of, you know, the organization, how that's all going to flow.
Yep, yep. And what I'll do is I'll include in the note too is the categories that Kevin and I looked at that we, we value the most. I can't say it publicly yet, because that's part of the interview process. But we're putting heavy emphasis on so that we can objectively select the best person for that job. That's the goal.
All right, any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alasey?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Shummers? Oberon?
Yes.
Musman? Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Connell?
Thank you, your honor. I move we adjourn to 5:00 PM, February 9th, 2021.
We are adjourned. Give us a few minutes here to get the committee of the whole set up.